You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Planning Board here, Witten Hall, and I'll begin with a roll call. Scott Self here. Richard Lane is not here. Jane Johnson. Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Yes.
Selectman's rep, Bill Hutwaker. Alternate Steve Malone. Alternate Michael Scungeo.
Here.
And alternate Brian Vertigill is not here. So I will seat Michael Scungeo for Richard Lane. And the agenda this evening, applications in public hearings. We have Planning Board number 23-012. That's a multi-tenant application. Daniel Lussier Jr. requests to operate a meat deli shop in the existing multi-tenant commercial property owned by Richard Pratt located at 919 West Swansea Road, Unit 4 and 5. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 71 Lot 11 in the Business District. Item B, which is Planning Board number 23-013. That's a site plan modification. TC Legacy LLC requests a site plan modification to construct 660 square foot addition to an existing structure at 67 California Street. Subject property is shown at Tax Map 73 Lot 24 and is located in the Commercial Industrial District. Then, under Discussions and Other Business, we have a Site Plan Review Extension Request from New Hampshire Solar Garden. Site Plan Review Regulations Discussion, Plan Reading Workshop, any other businesses may be required. So first of all, Regional Impact Vote would be in order.
I think that there is no regional impact.
Okay. Vote by Michael York that nothing on tonight's agenda requires a regional impact.
Becomes Jane.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. And it'll just be noted for the minutes that Jane is here. And the minutes of May 25, 2023. Does anyone have any comments on those minutes? Changes or anything like that? If not, a motion to approve as presented would be in order. Motion by Victoria to approve as presented, seconded by Michael York. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Brings us to our first application, which is the number 23-012, and that's the multi-tenant application. And that's Daniel Lussier Jr. requests to operate a meat and deli shop in the existing multi-tenant commercial property, and that's owned by Richard Pratt located at 919 West Swansea Road and is Unit 4/5. And it's shown at Tax Map 71 Lot 11. And I will open the public hearing. We have the drawings and some of the sphere. And who would the applicant approve?
These strings are not for this application. They're to follow.
Oh, yes, that's right. Thank you. That's right. Yes. Okay. Yeah. And any additions to your, let's see, your application? Describe what you're going to be doing there.
We'll be selling ramen, sandwiches, a little produce.
And there's going to be no seating in there?
No seating.
No, it's just going to be strictly takeout, by the sounds of it.
Takeout.
And let's see. Also, the septic system on that parcel, it's probably going to be putting a fair amount more load on that system, I would think. Is there any idea about that system? Is the owner here?
No, he's not.
No, he is, yes. Do you know?
Oh, yes, this is Richard.
About the septic system? And...
That's what the state, the state handles that. So they do a load calculation on the square foot of the whole entire plaza, and then the septic designer will say what it can come back as, once the state does what the load limit is for this particular application.
And then your state, I mean, then your septic designer is designing a new septic system for you, you mean?
No, no septic.
He's going to look over the original one?
Right, because when the last guy that came in for approval, what it was is, it's so many square feet per person, and there's only so many bathrooms. So they do the calculation on what, you know, meat deli or ice cream or retail.
Yeah.
So with the other retails in it, it puts loads, so there's more available for this application. So once the state comes back with what they request, and then it'll go to the septic guy, he'll do the calculation and say, you know, if it's good, it's bad, if we get to add to it, or do nothing.
Okay. Any plans of a grease trap or anything in there for that type of a business?
Yeah, definitely be a grease trap because it's private septic, and I'm not going to, there'll be a grease trap.
Private or not, it's a good idea.
Yeah. No, it comes out of my pocket. So there'll be a grease trap, you know, and they'll have, they'll maintenance, they'll keep track of the record so it'll be cleaned and, you know, checked every... Usually, you do those about every three to four weeks. They just put a trap, they scrape the scum off the top, you know, cleaned it, and just keep a record of it.
That's a small trap, that sounds like you're talking about. Generally, you just pump them out of your core, but it sounds like a small trap you're talking about.
Yeah, it's only going to be for the sink. That's the only thing that's going to be.
Oh, okay, it is a small trap then.
Yeah, it's just for the three-day sink.
And cooking, that type of stuff you're going to be doing there, or no?
We'll do hot sandwiches to go with, and baking bread. We'll do some big fresh bread, but not much.
But it'll be a convection oven?
Yes.
Okay. And also, in your application, you had space for five, five parking spaces out front there. And I think it currently calls for seven spaces for the...
There's more out there. I don't know if you must have put that in there.
Me either.
Okay. I mean, as you know, there's plenty of parking.
There are a lot there.
Yeah.
Right. You're going to allot seven spaces then for your space there. That's what you need. And, like you said, there's no sit-down there, so it's going to be for the retail space.
Correct.
Let's see what else here. Board members?
Your license from the state, is that pending?
Yeah, everything's all done. Just got to wait on the...
We would probably ask you to send us a copy of that, please.
Well, not to interrupt you, but before the state goes into trial, we've got to have approval. We've got to have approval from the town, and then the state looks at it, and then they put down a date.
Right.
So first, they have submitted everything, but the town has to say it's an approved spot.
And let's see. Any other board members have questions here? No? Okay. So it looks like the only issues then are to see if that septic system can handle that business, and that's an approval. I guess it's probably a letter from your septic designer, once the state comes in.
Yes. He will do it directly with the state. They go back and forth.
And that's above and beyond or separate from your licensing? So another department you're working with there?
DES is with that. DHHS is for the licensing.
Okay. What else? Questions? Any from the public or other questions on this multi-tenant?
Do you say the hours they'd be open?
We're thinking 10 to 6, Wednesday through Sunday, close Monday, Tuesday, to see how business is.
Okay. If there's nothing else, no other questions, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. So it looks like two things would be waited on. One thing would be the condition of the septic system there, whether it can hold that kind of load or not, and the other thing is the license for the, for the business. So those could be conditions if the board wanted to approve, or if the board wanted to continue it until those are in. That's the board's purview.
I make a motion that we approve pending the two conditions were decided.
Okay. Motion by Michael York to approve with the conditions that the septic system gets a clean bill of health, we'll say.
I'll second.
Yes, seconded by Brandon Self, and also that they get the state license that they need for operation. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So need to get that septic approval there, and the town needs a copy of that. You can bring it to the land use office. You want to get that?
Yep.
And the approval will be final after that.
Okay.
Not until then, and of course, until you get your license there.
Awesome. Thank you.
And if you want to change your hours of operation, you need to come back.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Item B. And item B is a site plan modification, and that is TC Legacy requests a site plan modification to construct a 660 square foot addition to an existing structure at 67 California Street. Subject property is shown at Tax Map 73 Lot 24 and is located in the Commercial Industrial District. And this time, we have the plans in front of us for this one. And I will open up the public hearing. So we know pretty much, what is it? Do you have anything to add in here?
I, yeah. Daniel Shabat Sr.
May I have your name, please? Yeah, for the record.
Daniel, Daniel Shabat Sr.
Thank you.
Owner and partner of TC Legacy, 67 California Street, Swansea. On my behalf, I am going to introduce you to my lovely wife, who's the chaos coordinator and the project manager of this, since she handled the logistics of connecting with architects, Tim Sampson. And I'm in touch with the general contractors in general. So with that, I'm going to have her give an overview on our behalf from my sister and myself.
It's pretty straightforward.
Can I just have your first name, please?
Sure. My name is Jennifer Shabat. Jennifer L. Shabat.
Thank you.
So different from his sister, Jennifer. Just as you may recall, this review, we came in back in April conceptually to talk about this project, and at that time, we didn't have a plan. And now we have this plan that places it on the site, and it shows you the drawings for the addition. And just, you know, the entire property being primarily of trade services, this particular project will benefit the carpentry shop that works there now. You know, really, our goal is to maintain the entire property in a safe and attractive manner, where the businesses provide services to the community and are proud to provide their work and prosper and to cultivate an environment that is a pleasure to serve and to support the success of these trade services in the town of Swansea. This request is to build an addition to the backside of building number eight. This will address the immediate need for more space at the custom cabinetry shop. This additional space will mean that jobs can be staged in a way that projects can be spaced throughout and improve and enhance this project management of a job, or perhaps multiple jobs being staged at any given time. And then I guess I will open into questions based on what you have in front of you.
Thank you. Okay. So board members, as you can see here, we've got a partial plan in front of us. They're asking for waivers, and there are other items that they did not submit in there. Again, this is an addition to that building there. They're going to be back again for future building of this lot, as I had described before. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's correct. So...
Not quite ready to let that go over.
Yep. So we don't have the entire lot drawn out here. We have just enough so we can see what the addition is going to be. Some, if you have a checklist, I have a checklist right here to see the items that were missing, and one of them was a North Arrow, but we've got it right there on the chart, so we do have the North Arrow in there. And the perimeter boundary lines and the lot area in square feet and acres is not provided. But again, we're looking at just a small addition to that building. They should be in later for, with a full site plan review with that information on it. So that's one thing we have to consider, whether that's going to be okay, yes or not, to leave that out, and what do you think? Or do you want me to just go down them all? And if you have an objection, objection to one of them, then we'll talk about it, if I do it that way.
Sure.
There are a few among those here. So they also asked for a waiver for, let's see, what do we have for a waiver down below? Okay, we'll get to the waivers later on.
So I may be able to answer questions on, this is the first time filling out this form, so I may be able to answer questions on any of that, or how I answered it.
Yeah, well, yeah, okay. Thank you. So we've got also the location, name, and widths of any existing and proposed roads on the property. There's nothing proposed there. There's an existing driveway on there, but again, we're going to see the whole site plan of this in the future here, I think, so we can take that in consideration. Also, identification of access from the site to public streets, site distances from the access point, curb cuts, and proposed changes, if any, to existing streets. Again, we're looking at the small addition to that building there. Everything else is staying the same. Let's see. Also, we have landscape plan, and again, about this, there's no landscape plan with it, and obviously, it's because it's an addition right there for that. It's an approved site plan. So let's see. And location, type, and nature of all existing and proposed lighting. That will probably be on the formal site plan when you come in later. And just, board members, just speak up if you think that that should be on this plan here. That's what we're going down the list for. And let's see. They want a waiver for natural features such as water bodies, ledge outcropping, wetlands, and so on and so forth. And asking for a waiver for existing and proposed grades and topographical contour at five-foot intervals. And we have some topographical contours already on this one, but not for the entire plat, but around the existing building here, they are still asking for a waiver for that one, but the waiver won't, probably won't be for the actual site plan. If you bring the site plan in for the other building there, the planning board will require that the topical be for the entire lot.
And that's part of our contracting for, for that future plan.
Okay. Next would be the size and accurate location of all existing and proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, fire ponds, which doesn't really pertain to this whatsoever. Means of providing water supply.
Is it going to be sprinkled on that building addition?
The addition, that little addition there?
Yeah. It's right next to the body shop.
If the fire department says so, I don't know. That building is sprinkled even, the only one that's there. But the fire department generally has to sign off on these things anyway.
I don't think it would be necessary because it's less than 50%. It's well less than 50% above.
In my mind, it's still dangerous, little, if that body shop wasn't there, yeah.
What body shop?
YBA.
You're talking about YBA.
It's not a body shop.
It's separated by a...
It's a mechanic shop.
And it's also separated by a...
Still, they do grinding and stuff like that, yeah.
Is it separated by a...
It's separated by a concrete wall as well. The main body of the building, YBA, is concrete.
They just have to the fire department, of course.
But if we need to talk to the fire department.
They will, yeah, they will probably want to take a look, probably for that. Definitely for the new one.
They have reviewed the architectural plans that were submitted. I'm sure they'll be coming out to do a site visit as well, but they were comfortable with the plan that was submitted.
Okay. Good. Let's see. Brings us surface drainage patterns, again, for the entire site plan. It's pretty flat there, I know, but for when you get the big site plan in, the board will require that. Now, let's see. Got that. Location and type of proposed sewage disposal system. And again, that should be located on the plan when you bring the other one in, because it's not on here, and I'm assuming that you know where it is, and should be located on the site. And location, let's see, of existing and proposed onsite well showing 75-foot radius, the same with that. If you can locate the well on there and show it on the plan. See. Soil survey data from Cheshk County Soil Survey. When they could do the contours, the same person will probably be the one that will do the soil survey, just put the types of soils on there. And that's, again, standard procedure. And location of any existing or proposed usements, deed restrictions, and our contents, there are none, I'm assuming there are none on there. And architectural plans, we have those. Okay. So those are the items that they're asking for a waiver and the items that aren't here. If it's okay with the board to proceed with those items missing or waive those items, actually, what we should do for this, if we're going to do that, then we'll just need a motion to do that.
I'm totally comfortable with that, because I viewed this, thanks to you coming in for the conceptual discussion, which I think was really great, and grateful that you did that. This, as presented before, was like a stopgap solution for your tenant who needs extra space to support his business, right? But we know you're coming back, and you, and at that point, we need to have all the information that we're going on the ultimate site plan. So I'm totally good with accepting this.
Me too.
Yeah, me too.
Let's have a motion that we grant them the waivers that they're asking for, as well as the items that they're missing on here for this site plan here.
Knowing that the complete site plan will be presented when the proposed, new proposed building is presented.
It will.
If and if...
And if it's missing, it won't be accepted, you know? That's how that would work.
We're just waiting for it to...
Okay. So is that a motion?
Yes.
Victoria? Okay. Motion by Victoria to grant the waivers and to grant them, I guess, the recognition of the missing, other missing items from our checklist. Is there a second? Second by Brandon, I guess I'll give you that one there, saying, Brandon, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Good. We'll be on that. So that really just brings us to the building application, and we've got a lot of information here. Got the plans in front of us. There are larger building plans on the back there or in the next, last two pages here that you can see a little better than in our packet. Pretty straightforward what they want to do here. And questions from the board on this. There is further information in our packet about the entire thing, how the buildings are being used on that parcel. They brought that in before, too. We still have it here. But for the proposed 600 square foot addition, do we have any questions for the applicant? I don't either. You can see from the architectural plan, it's going to be set up inside. Of course, the fire department will be inspecting that anyway. It looks like there are two rooms there. They've got an overhead door and existing doors to remain, so there'll be access into the building there. Pretty sophisticated. And that's going to be, it looks like a steel, sealed building, the outsides, is that what that is? Siding to match existing. Oh, it's T-111.
It's T-111. It'll match the other part of the existing building that has it above the concrete block. So it will be a continuous appearance.
Okay. A lot of your phone there. Any other questions from the board on this? No other public, or anybody, I guess, nobody on the Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? If no other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing. And the public hearing is closed. So let's see. Pretty straightforward, as we can see. They will be back for another addition to that with a larger site plan. Pretty straightforward, working on this pretty well. And let's see. If it's approved, the conditions would be by, of course, the usual final approval by the fire department and by the building inspector. I can't think of any other conditions to put on it. Anybody else? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make the motion to approve of those conditions.
Motion to approve with the conditions that the fire department sign off and the building inspector sign off on it. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Oh, it was seconded by Michael Scungeo.
John Jane.
Oh, Jane, no. I recognize Michael.
Oh, Michael over there.
To second it. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. And you'll just contact the fire department, or they'll be contacting you, one or the other, and go right ahead and hope to see you in here soon.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. No, we're not. We waived that.
We waived that, too. If all the latest question, if any of the missing items...
Yes.
Okay. I want to keep this controlled.
You mentioned the missing items, so yes, all the missing items, we all waived it.
Okay.
There wasn't anything that was that important that needed on there? Put on, on the next one they bring in, the complete site plan, of course. Most of them, so it's going to have to be there. Okay. Discussions and Other Business, Site Plan Review, Extension Request, that's by New Hampshire Solar Garden. And they request an extension because their ever-source is doing a little, I don't know what they're doing, maybe they're dragging their feet, I don't know, but ever-source is, is doing a study. And I don't even know what that study is. Did they elaborate on that, what it was?
They did not.
Just the one here, sort of going, yeah, they didn't. They just said they, that, let's see, ever-source, they're still in progress. And let's see. They will not give them final approval, and I would assume that would be final approval to hook on to their system until they do whatever kind of a study that they're doing. We don't know what it is, so...
Have they done any work on the site at all?
I don't believe that they have, because they don't have a building permit yet.
So...
And they can't start moving earth until they have a building permit.
There's no development there. There's no substantial development. There's no preliminary development there, by the sounds of it. But it does sound, sound like it's a reasonable reason for an extension, that it's beyond their control. If ever-source is holding them up with some sort of a study, then I would say it's beyond their control, and they might be warrant for the 12-month extension. And let's see. We do that with the motion. Also, there were other conditions we put on that plat to be, and there were administrative ones that they had a year to do those as well. It hasn't been a year.
Yes. New Hampshire DOT, access permit, authorization.
Yeah. So they...
The commissioning...
If they haven't gotten all those permits, it's, they still have time to do it, so it has nothing to do with what we're discussing here tonight on that type of a, an extension. So... Anything? No? Okay. Motion by Jane to grant the 12-month extension. Is there a second?
I'll second it with the understanding that these, the conditions continue with...
Well, they have to anyways. We already made that decision before, so we'll leave this one without those in there because that's not part of what we're talking about tonight here.
And this would be a one-year extension. Could they get another one after that, or not?
No, according to our site plan regulations, but we probably could. I don't know. I don't think we have done that before, but...
I believe the regulations say that they have to reapply, that they're...
Start from scratch, in other words?
Yeah, have to reapply. Yeah, 12 months, it's 12 months.
So would this be a one-year continuation or, from tonight? Or would this be a one-year from when we approved it back in July?
From 20th of July.
It would be. Just curious.
Yeah, so they'll get a year from, from that.
Yeah, the July.
Of this, 20, of this year, 20th of July.
Yes, yes.
We're working on a zoning application for solar farms. We're working on a zoning application for solar farms.
Let's get this done first.
Well, I'm, there's a reason for the question.
Is there a second, do we have a second? You second it, Michael?
No, I thought she, she already did.
Oh, Victoria, okay, Victoria, okay, we got a second, okay, now we can enter into discussion, okay.
The, the question is that, okay, we're given the extension, they don't apply, so they have to come back from scratch. Now, we're working on, I believe Joseph's working on the zoning application that we're going to look at. If we were to pass that before they came back in for another application, how would that affect them?
They would be subject to it because their, their zoning relief that they received for this application is currently held open by their site plan, um, application approval.
Right, and if nothing happened up to the 28th and that, that whole thing stopped and they have to come back in, then they'd have to apply through what regulations we passed.
But the, yeah, that.
That's what I'm saying.
I agree with that too, but yeah, that's right, that's, that we're approving for another 12 years, I mean 12 months, sorry about that.
I'm not against that, I'm not against that, I'm just saying, I just want that other information out there.
But there's, and I don't know what the exact wording, but in the five-year exemption in the RSAs, it states that if the planning board doesn't spell out what is substantial development or building on the property, then they automatically get the five-year grant of, I guess, from our zoning ordinance and any other ordinances. So. They, they would still have it, if, if their 12-month, the, the extension we gave them, if that runs out, that would be, in my opinion, they would not have that five-year. And I think in your opinion too, right?
As long as there's no activity, no development on the property, unless they come in to request some minimum standard be defined by the board for what that would look like.
He's hoping they can get it done, but, you know, ever-source, you just don't know.
But, I'm saying, since the board didn't set what it was when we granted the approval, they could come in and probably just take a couple shoulders of dirt out of there. And as long as they started it, we didn't define what the substantial development was, they would have that five-year exemption, exemption. And.
I think you still, um, are allowed to make a determination on that.
After, after the fact?
Because the regulations do say that that's, that's your discretion, what, what constitutes active and substantial development.
I think, we, yeah, we do in our, in our regulations.
Right.
But that is only pertaining to, I think, our.
It's not on the five-year part?
I don't think it, it pertains to that, I think it's only to whether they, whether they have their approval and, and it's enough to continue the approval. I don't think it's, I think the RSAs on the five-year part of it supersedes that.
I'm hoping it doesn't go there, but we should be prepared in our minds if it does get to that point. Because it obviously is a possibility.
Prepared to whether or not they would be held to the new regulations.
Yeah.
And we're thinking that they would be held to the new regulations.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too, but. Hey, we don't know what Joe's thing looks like at this point either.
No, we don't, it may be exactly like they've got it there or something.
Yeah, where we're going to allow it.
Yeah, but the planning board will review the whole thing anyway and, you know, and see, add to it, subtract from it, whatever it was before the, we presented to the voters.
I'm not going to be able to find that in here because I've spent too much time with the new one.
Yeah, I know what you mean, yeah, I know what I mean, but, but we, yeah, we could just look at it for a second. It has nothing really to do with our, our vote though, I guess, so we might as well take the vote. Motion is on the floor to grant the 12-month extension, and there's a second, and is there a?
Who made the motion?
It was, the motion was.
Jane.
By Jane, yes, it was by Jane, and it was seconded by Victoria, okay, thanks. And any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate the saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so they've got it, let's just take a look in our, we're going to get to the site plan regulations anyways, aren't we? In our next item up here.
The, the new ones don't apply to.
No, they don't, they don't apply to that, but it's, we didn't change too much in that in the new ones, did we, in that, the substantial development part of it?
I don't think we changed much, I know that it said four years before, we changed it to five years to match.
Of course, we know another property too, up there, we were 12, but I don't see much going on either, we gave an extension to. So that would be also.
You, you haven't noticed much out there?
No.
When's the last time you drove by it?
A week ago.
Drove by it again.
Which way were you looking?
And you guys did make a determination of what would constitute active and substantial development on that property?
Yes, we did.
When they came in?
Yes.
We have in our site plan regs, different places where that extension is there, I think.
It's on page 19.
Well, I'm on the old, I'm on the old one here.
I'm on the old one, yes.
Pretty much, I think there's a saying, the new one there.
Well, it is a little different because we just point directly to the RSA in the new one.
Yep, per, per the lawyer's suggestion, yeah, and which was, I think, a good suggestion to, to do that, point right in there. So, there are two, I think there are two things we're talking about though, as far as that, we're talking about the, say, the 12-month extension, about the substantial development, and also we're talking about the five-year, there'll be five-year now, exemption from ordinances. So.
So they would be locked in to the current, the, the zoning ordinance that they were approved in and the site plan regulations they were approved in.
Which are?
For four years.
Which are these old ones?
I'm trying the old ones.
Yep.
Okay, to answer your question.
I think.
Maybe it sounds like a silly question, but.
No, it's a good question.
It is.
It's a good test for all our brains. Did everybody pick up a copy of the most current draft of the site plan regulations? I don't want to jump over Scott, but I just want to make sure everybody that we're all talking off of the same papers yesterday, right there.
And has anyone, everyone reviewed them yet, or shall we just go over the things, well, what we did, I, I got together with Sarah last week, I think it was. And I think at the last meeting, we pretty much agreed about looking it over, see what the lawyer said about it, see whether it made sense or not. And it looked like the lawyer's suggestions, though mine are, most of them were, uh, they made pretty much sense, so. Sarah just incorporated them into, into this new set that we have here. And you can see it's sort of a little darker there as, as the new, as you see on them, it's like it's shaded a little bit with some of the new stuff added in there. But there are also, and, and do we, do we want to go over those, or are we just looking at them, or, you know, we've been over these regulations a lot, we could go over a few of them. We, we added in, uh, on page two, the attorney had a problem with our multi-tenant part of it there and saying that, you know, it, it needs a site plan or it doesn't, one or the other. It can't be both, or it can't be anything in between, and he was correct on that, it is true, so to remedy that, on page two, on number three A, we added this in. And I'll read it from the beginning, "The planning board shall have the responsibility for making the final decision as a necessity of a site plan review, where there is any doubt as to whether or not a project requires a site plan review," and we added this in. "As may be the case with businesses moving into multi-use buildings that have received previous site plan approval." Then it goes on, "The affected party should request a determination from the board," and we added this in at a regularly scheduled meeting. And that, that covers it, so they can come in and the board can decide whether they're required to come in for a site plan approval or not, whether the business is close enough so that the current site plan takes care of it or not. So instead of having that whole thing in there that the lawyer said was probably not the best thing to have in there, so that's how we addressed it. So, I don't know, anybody have any comments on that?
Good solution.
Move forward.
And on page five, and the lawyer suggested this, and this would be about in the middle of the page, that B, or five, little five, and you can see it's darkened out, or darkened up. Says, "The board may review documents presented by the applicant at the design review meeting, but shall not accept any such documents as formal submissions." And which is a good call, put it in there just to make it clear what we're doing there. So that was from lawyer's suggestions. And let's see, let me find this, one of these, Sarah just.
That's on page 10.
Okay, page 10, uh, item E, page 10, up top there, item E, "Acceptance will be by affirmative vote of a majority of the board members present." And it adds in, "If notice of a public hearing was included in the notice under three C, a public hearing may follow immediately. If not, a public hearing will be scheduled for a time and date certain." He just wanted to make it in, clear in there. If, if a note, if it was notice for the public hearing or not, and what would be done. Which is good, okay. Now, page, we added something in page 12. Page 12, C, at the very top there, it says, "Site plan approval will be valid for one year." And we added in, "After the date upon which the board voted to approve," provided that, and then it goes down the whole business there. We just wanted to make it clear what date we're talking about, whether it's when we sign the plaque, or when we do a conditional approval, or a regular approval. We want to make clear, and we borrowed that from six 7715 in RSAs, they use the same type of language, so it clears it up and says, "Be valid for one year after the date upon which the board voted to approve," then there's no question. Next one, what makes sense, Sarah, 13? Yeah, and 13, on, on B, we talk about conditional approval, it says, "If a conditional approval has been granted pursuant to six A in this section," and then this was added in here, the lawyer. "The conditions need to be met within one year, or the approval is null and void, and the applicant must resubmit the application." We had taken that out on one of the other ones to, to address how the, let's see, that court case that we're talking about. Yeah, that Sergio weird court case we're talking about, to address the concerns there about the preliminary, yeah.
Precedent and.
Yeah, precedent and subsequent, uh, conditions and that type of stuff. So, it looks like in, in, in the RSAs, they kind of make it confusing, but it looks like that the legislature did it on purpose so that the approval and the 30-day appeal period runs from when the vote was taken, regardless of whether there are conditions on there, regardless of whether they've come back for a, a prelimi, I'm not preliminating, for the compliance, thank you, for the compliant hearing or not, regardless of any of those, the legislature said, you've got 30 days from when the board voted, whether they, the plaque was signed or not, so, um, anyway, so, we have redone our, our, our regulations here to sort of do the, the thing with the, those, do different types of conditions. Lawyer said, we think you ought to take it out of there, so we took it all out of there and put it back the way it was, that's what these additions are, and that way we had it before. And we got, number C, again, we have if the conditions, we put this back in, "If the conditions are met within the one-year timeframe, the approval becomes final without further public hearing, and the applicant has one year from that date to demonstrate active and substantial, substantial development as defined in, in the approval." So do we want to leave it like that, or do we want to, you know, do we want to have it that he has one year from when we take that and vote, or one year from when he comes in with the last approval? Because I think we could do it either way, couldn't we? Sarah?
Um, I think we could, I'm not, I'd have to check.
I think, we've been doing it, I think, when they come in with the final approval, the administrative one, into the office there, we've been giving them one year since, I mean, after that. So, do we want to continue that, or do we want to give them just the one year regardless? Because sometimes it's beyond their control, you know, when they're going to get that darn, darn approval, and they can't touch anything until they get that approval.
Especially when you're dealing with the state agencies.
Yeah, and you can't do the substantial improvement to the property until you get, we'll say, permit from the state, or dredge and fill, or any of that type of stuff, so. I always say we should keep it like this, like we've been doing it, but we have the option to do whatever we want to do, I guess. Keep it this way?
Yeah, let's keep it like this.
Keep it that way. Page 22, yeah, 22, and that has to do with that five-year exemption we were just talking about. And at the end of that paragraph on section 10, we just added, "Per the lawyer, as provided in and subject to the requirements of RSA 67439." And then they can read it over for themselves to see how to interpret it. And I think that's it.
Yeah, that's pretty much it, I did change the format just slightly, I added bold headings to, um, different sections as Victoria suggested, and there were a couple of typos in there here and there that Victoria found, and, um, I cleaned that stuff up without your blessing, so I kind of want to make you aware of it.
I think the bold headlines is a good idea.
It is a good idea.
Go on, Drew, you don't want to assist them.
Way easier to navigate, and one of those sections, I forget which one it is, it's so long that you forget on which section you're at, and they've got a backpedal about five pages. But, I just marked mine up with a pen, I'm under section 10, 11, 12, whatever the heck it is, so I know where I am on the thing. Victoria had some comments on page four.
Yeah, I've got two questions, um, one is actually something that Sarah pointed out at, at the top of page four, um, I was confused by the sentence, but Sarah said, well, wait a minute, do we really want to have board members making reasonable attempts to notify the property owner of site visits by individual members? Because that means we're knocking as, as, you know, individual people on the door of property owners, and that's going to open up us having ex parte communications. Maybe we should just strike that.
I think you're right, I'd agree, it should be a site visitor or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, and then I had one other question on, um, page eight, the new page eight. And that is number two, um, where it says, "The planning board may engage any professional assistance as is required to adequately evaluate reports and stuff like that." And it seemed to me like that pertained to all of these kinds of reports that we are allowing ourselves to ask for. So I wondered whether that might be more appropriately at the top of, or at the bottom, but not sort of mixed in as a subsection of, of section five.
So that, you would suggest to put it where, for instance?
Well, either at the beginning or the end, but it's, it's not like a, a subcategory. I'm sorry, Victoria, which section are you talking about? Page A two. Number two. Thank you. And my thought is that, um.
To move it to?
To make it clear that we could use that, um, that we were allowed to engage professional help, we could, we were allowed to engage professional help on any of these different kinds of plans and analyses. So maybe it should be at the very beginning, or it could be its own little separate thing, um, you know, like, like, um, at the very end, just before, as-built plans. It says, "Such other informations may be deemed necessary, blah, blah, blah," we could stick it in there and say that the planning board, um.
Let's see.
I think, actually, I would put it at the beginning, if it were me, I would just put it at the beginning and sort of, heads up, we can ask for analyses and evaluations, unless there's a reason why it's here, and if there is a reason, then I'm all about it, but I just didn't understand why it's there.
I, I understand, it's there, right, I think we should, probably should move that as, because it was there, it was in part of those suggestions that we came up with for the conservation commission. And we had it in there just in case we had to, you know, do other, you know, types of studies and things for underlying aquifers and things like that. I think so, if it were, I don't know, um.
Yeah, which beginning do you want, which page? Well, um, it's on page seven where it says, "Other." In my, in my dreams, I would replace that, that single word, "Other," with additional plans and analyses that may be required. Because it's a little more specific, and then I would start it off with, so the new title is, "Additional plans and analyses that may be required," instead of "Other." And then the next, the first item would be, "The planning board may require any professional assistance as is required."
I think that's a good place for it.
I'm sorry, would you repeat what you're referring to? Replacing "other" with what? Additional plans and analyses that may be required. Would be the new title for C.
Right, I'm assuming that you're making that the title.
Yeah, and then, then it would begin with, it's not even an, an element of the outline necessarily, it's just a overarching.
It's just a statement.
Permission, right?
And we're not giving that a number, we're just.
Uh, yeah, I would just stick it at the beginning, yeah, heads up, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay, just to be clear, all right? Yeah, I think that's probably a good thing to move that over there, because it, it will make it pertain to everything else too. Yeah, that's how that got in there. Anybody else have anything on the site plan review regulations?
Oh, I, I actually do, I just wanted to bring everybody's attention to page one, the site plan review fee schedule. The excavation permit fee and the new tenant application, uh, I guess, starting with the new tenant application, it seems like with the changes that are proposed to site plan review with multi-tenant process being under scope of review. review with multi-tenant process being under scope of review, it wouldn't be necessary to distinguish between new tenant and multi-tenant because everything's going to follow that new procedure that we now will not have. But we discussed that new businesses, any business moving into a multi-tenant building would come to the board first for a determination of the necessity of site plan review. So.
Are we going to replace the multi, I mean, the new tenant application with just one application, that's a multi-tenant application?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, you're saying just cross that listing out?
I I, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
Unless you guys don't think that makes sense.
I think it makes sense. It's because, right, it's the same darn thing. It's going to be anyway.
And then the excavation permit fee, um, I don't have an excavation permit that I can charge a fee for. Um, the assessing coordinator has an excavation permit that the state charges a fee for, which is sort of separate from our process.
Yeah.
So I'm not really, unless you guys know of.
No.
Because I I just, I don't have this permit, so I thought maybe we could remove it from the list.
Yeah, let's do that because Greg never saw it either. Yeah. No, I think that's good too. Anybody else?
So um, someone from Zoom called, I have New Hampshire Solar Garden, asks, did the solar extension receive an approval? I joined at 6:30 thinking the two public hearings would take some time. Thank you, Andrew.
What was the last part he said about the public hearings?
Oh, I joined at 6:30 thinking the two public hearings would take some time.
Okay, yeah, well, I guess they didn't, but anyways, yes, the extension was granted, the 12 month extension.
Okay.
Thank you for letting us know somebody's on there. I forget about that whole thing at all. Thanks. Okay, so we're getting rid of the excavation permit fee and getting rid of the new tenant application and the fee, correct? Correct, okay. Great, so. I think then it might be ready for a public hearing.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
I will set that up for June 22nd. I will have the um, table of contact contents fixed soon now that we're done.
Yeah, perfect.
Playing with it.
Yeah, and I'll incorporate the changes from this evening.
Yeah, super. Now for the subdivision regulations. We're going to work on those later, but not tonight. Well, let's see. Plan reading workshop, anybody want to review any of the plan reading type of it? Or I'll let the board decide when they want to cut out early tonight or what you want to do. We can go over them at any time.
Well, it'd be the first early night we've had in months.
Yes, since like last September.
Yeah. Some people have to drive millions of miles to get home, right?
Not me, but some, yeah.
Shall we call it an early night then?
I have something, I have a show and tell for the.
Okay.
Oh, hello.
This, my husband went on a tour today, per invitation of the Flatlight Company, this building over off 32. So for, I said, I'll take this and show the board, and Sarah, you can keep it if you want to. He got multiple copies. They put them on a trolley, yeah, this doesn't have to go in a minute, it's separate. He put them on a trolley and took them around to show them this development and other things in Nashua. And yes, it's Nashua. And by the way, he's, I was showing him the plans for the building over by where the fun park was. And he said, I saw that today. They have the same thing in Nashua and it's ugly.
Oh, do they? They have a building like that out there?
Yes, they said that the other night, that they have one in, they built one in Nashua and it's that color.
Taking a picture on his phone.
Inside, you can take a look at the landscaping that they did in front of some of the things. And it's in an area, when I looked at it, I thought about the industrial park where he is going to send that development back into the woods and, you know.
Want to take a look? I'll get it back to you soon.
And um, it's, you know, they they do quality buildings. And he thought that the EDAC people might like to see it too. Thank you.
I can, if Greg's not bringing um, copies to EDAC on Monday, I can bring that and share with them.
You take, you take that one. Anyway, that one's for you.
It's an early Christmas present.
What, getting out early tonight?
That too. As a bonus one.
All right, anybody have anything else to the meeting? If not, uh, meeting to adjourn would be in order.
That's all I was here to parlay.
Motion by Jane to adjourn, is there a second? Seconded by Brandon, is there any further discussion? Although the favoring gets a saying, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, then we are officially adjourned.